Like to call this meeting to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's meeting, all members are present, and open forum. This is a 15-minute time period that is set aside for us to receive citizen input, and there are none today. With that, we go to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So made.
By Jonathan, second?
Second.
By Michael. Uh, this is a roll call vote. Jonathan?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes 7-0. Uh, next up is the consent agenda. These are items that are considered routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. There's no separate discussion on these. And the items tonight are the financials, the check wire transfer dispersment summary, wire transfer EFT and ACH bank activity, the bank reconciliation statement from January 2021, the building bond investment report, the monthly wire detail, the monthly health dental wire detail, the monthly check detail, the monthly ACH, the approval of the school board minutes, the joint meeting between the board and legislators on February 1st, the regular board meeting February 8th, the study session February 22nd, personnel items, candidates for employment, resignations, terminations, non-renewals, as listed, the leaves of absence. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So made.
By, was that Julie? Mary, sorry. Mary, second?
Julie.
Julie, thank you. Uh, that is a roll call. Amy?
Aye.
Julie? Mary?
Aye.
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 Enrique?
Aye.
Okay. That passes 7-0. And next up is the resolution for the acceptance of gifts. Those are listed in your board packet. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution of gifts?
So made.
By Mary, second?
Julie.
By Enrique? Roll call, Mary?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Enrique?
Aye.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Aye. That passes 7-0. Next up is Laker Pride, Dr. Stallow.
Thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. March is music in our schools month. And over the years, we've had amazing opportunities to have some guest musicians with us. Because of our COVID protocols and practices right now, we were unable to have guests perform this evening, and we'll have to figure out another time to make up for that. But to represent our students across the district, our music programs across the district, and the wonderful opportunities that they provide, the wonderful talents that our students have, our middle school band and choir directors, Alicia Dunning and Brian Melody, and they are going to share a presentation with us this evening on behalf of our middle school, especially music departments, but certainly with all of their colleagues and district-wide students in mind. So with that, Alicia and Brian, please come on up. Thank you so much for being here and for everything that you do to enrich the lives of our students and all of us through music.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much for letting me speak on behalf of middle school music. I wanted to take a few minutes to share some of the cool things we are doing even in this untraditional year. All right, middle school choir has still been finding success this year. We started the year in hybrid, spending time singing outdoors. When we moved to full-distance learning, we continued singing, especially working on solo songs since students couldn't only hear themselves at home. We highly encourage students to turn on their cameras, and 95% of our students regularly do so. So it's been really great teaching to actual faces. We were asked to be a part of KS95's Cloud Choir, and we had an amazing virtual choir experience for the students. The CDC recommends singing only up to 30 minutes per class, which has been a big struggle for us. With our remaining class time, we've been studying a marvelous musician every Monday, and we are super excited that we are in the process of getting ukuleles for our eighth graders to learn some of that extra, during that extra time. We're currently working with Community Ed on our middle school virtual musical, Schoolhouse Rock Junior. Students are learning their music 100% virtually, and they will submit their recordings for us to produce an entire virtual show. We are also still planning on having our Laker Honor Choir in the spring, hopefully meeting outdoors regularly. Here is a quick video of our choir rehearsal from last week. All right, band students have demonstrated that even COVID can't keep the band down. Though most students would say mask-wearing is not their favorite part of band class, they have stayed positive and have been developing their musical skills. Students are continuing to work on their music theory using the Breezen Through Theory software. Last year, our students received a top school award in music theory, so it's exciting that students are continuing working towards that goal again. We have lessons daily only for 7th and 6th graders this year, but we've had the chance to work with students in small groups to better differentiate and help them grow. We're excited to announce that we were able to have both jazz band and honor band for students this year. Just last week, students in these ensembles participated in an onstage recording session that will be presented to families. Recording has been great for the kids to experience as close to a normal performance opportunity as possible. We are looking forward to getting outside in the coming months and taking the show on the road with Marching Band, and we hope to be able to put the band back together and showcase some of the skills students have gained during these unprecedented times. Here's a quick video of the jazz band rehearsal from the past week. All right, here is, oops, wrong, there we go. As far as middle school general music classes go, we offer 6th grade general music where students explore a variety of topics in music ranging from guitar, drumming, electronic music, intro to DJing, and more. 7th graders have the opportunity to take drumming and electronic music classes where students dive deeper into beatboxing, rap, drumming patterns, bucket drumming, digital music composition, and music videos. 8th graders have the opportunity to take All Amped Up, which is where students focus on learning to play the guitar. Here is a recent project completed by Brian's Quarter II Class 7th Grader Enzo LaMagna sharing an important and relevant message for us all. An honor from Enzo. As you know, this is far from a regular school year for us, but we know that given the circumstances, we are still making connections with students, and we are still making the best out of a difficult situation. We worry about the effect COVID will have on our programs. We know a lot of students sign up for our classes because they enjoy concerts and the team-building that the majority of our year has lacked. We are thankful for your support of our programs, and we ask for your continued support in the years to come. We're proud to be a part of the PLSAS music team. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we are so proud of you.
Okay. Next up, I don't see any personnel items. Right, Jim? It has your name, but nothing there, okay? No unfinished minute, uh, no unfinished business, so into new business, operational plan and priority work with Mr. Holmberg and Ms. Goodman.
Wherever you want to. Good evening, Chair Ruel, members of the board, Dr. Stallow. Chrislyn Goodman and I are here this evening to present to you an update on multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS. It is in your board packet, it's a very lengthy process or very lengthy overview, but we wanted to spend some time giving, kind of starting back a couple of years ago. So we're going to be breaking this down into giving some historical context, as well as some of the reason for the work and the why for the work that we're doing, and then bringing it fast-forward up to what, some of the things that we're working on now as we plan for next year. Just understanding that as a district, it's always good to really sometimes take a peek at things from, relative to the priority work that we're doing, really, again, go through and talk about the plan, and then ultimately, you know, the work that we've done along the way, too. Always helps when you have new board members on the board as well to kind of bring them up to speed also, and, and things like that, so. We're going to jump right into this. We'll talk a bit about what is MTSS, why it is important, an overview of our district's priority work. There are two goals that we're going to speak to tonight. One is that MTSS goal, and then the second one is, is relatively recent with the focus on social-emotional learning supports for students. And so, bringing those together, finding connections, that is the foundation of MTSS. And so that's the, uh, that is kind of, that is how we're bringing this all together. We'll then do a quick recap of our work with the CARRY Institute, University of Minnesota, on the, on the work that they did with us a couple of years ago, our MTSS leadership team, which helps guide us in our process, and then more specifically, some of the things we're looking at as our model review and next steps in program development for 21, 22. So what is this and why is it important? We've got a lot of text here. And ultimately, what you see here are bold-faced words that are pulled out of this text. These are the things that we've identified as, number one, what is it and why is it important? So you see multi-tiered systems of supports, framework, strategies, proactive approach, academic or behavioral, earlier, early assessment and intervention. And you start to see some of, some of those other components there. These are all the reasons why. We know it's not a comprehensive list of why, but we know when we've worked with our, with our staff and with our stakeholders, we look with the research, these are the things that come out to us and reinforce the work that we're doing with students. This is a little bit more recent, I believe was shared with the board a little over a year ago, around MTSS and student performance. And we start specifically talking about differentiated instruction for students, universal design, evidence-based interventions, continuous measures. So we go from a broader sense down to a little bit more specific about what is that student experience and what are the experiences that are happening in the classroom? And then ultimately, they're, and eventually embedded by Congress in the, in the Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESSA. This graph here, I apologize for the small writing, but I think as a board, you've seen this one before, too, but in some ways, it provides a little bit closer of a context of what you see versus what, what is it is from, to what are those desired things that we're seeing in the classroom with students and with staff. This one here, I want to thank our district curriculum advisory committee from about a week and a half ago. One of the, we are talking about the tiered instructions of Tier 1 and Tier 2 and Tier 3, and I think one of the things when you get really focused on the work is you start looking at additional support for students that have additional needs or they're behind in their learning. And one of our curriculum advisory members said, hey, MTSS is also for our students who need extensions and enrichment and gifted. And so, we spent some time and we went back into some of our previous pro, convers, previous presentations, and we found that we have a diamond here, so to speak. That universal Tier 1 core instruction. And this is the one thing I, as board members, I want you all to take away from this presentation. All students are in Tier 1 core instruction. They all are there, given where they're at academically, socially, emotionally, behavioral, no matter where they're at, within their grade level, whether elementary, first grade, depending on the, the particular academic skill they might be focused on. And from, when, and these are the times when you start hearing assessment of learning and assessment for learning. Gauging as we look at the standards and what kids are supposed to know and what they're assessed of what they learn through the instruction and through the teaching, because teaching is what helps match those two, the standing, standards and what students know. And then ultimately, too, using assessment for learning to help plan those next steps for those students. And that's where you start looking at differentiation within the classroom or identifying where kids need those opportunities to go beyond the concepts because they're ready for it, they're ready for a deeper level of academics. Or, in, in so, in many cases, too, you look at kids that need additional support. It may not be for an entire academic content area, but it might just be on a specific skill. And you spend, and you have, again, either another level of support or another intervention for a short period of time, continuous assessment to see where that student is after you've tried that research-based intervention, so that eventually, the goal is they move back out into core instruction. The goal with the tiers is that it's not a permanent destination for students. Is that the, you know, when they're identified for either extension and additional support, they receive that, some need that a little longer, others, once they get it, they move out and back into that core instruction environment. So, I want to thank our curriculum advisory committee, and, and I, I thought it was important to spend a little bit of time on this slide in particular this evening. So here we break down Tier 1, and I mentioned that, so, again, it's, everyone is a Tier 1 student, is in, is in core instruction. We also have our social-emotional learning standards embedded into this as well. Tier 2 is supplemental, where they're, again, as you see, below grade-level standards, they're getting a little additional support, they can also be for students that, that need, that need enrichment as well. Tier 3 is where they need more comprehensive, more, more individualized instruction because the needs that they have in that area of instruction are, are a little bit more... Where the needs there are, they require a little bit more support on that, on that topic. If you're, if you're okay as a board, would you like me to continue?
Let's hold for one second, let's see if she can get Enrique on. Oh, okay. Hi Enrique, sorry about that, we're reconnecting here.
Oh, no problem.
Here, that's good. Should be good.
Thank you very much.
We lost the screen, just, yeah. Well, we lost all the screens, yeah. There you are, okay. There you are, we're back. All right.
Uh, and this is a great place to pick up because it's at our district's priority work, our, our work goals and our district's strategic plan. As I mentioned, the MTSS goal has been something as a board we've brought and given updates, been working on this for several years. There's something here that I do want to point out in this first goal that I, you're going to hear about in this presentation later. When you see in number one, a comprehensive K-12 multi-tiered system of supports framework, one of the things that is evident for us as a district is that we need to also include early childhood. And so, even though the priority work goal here says K-12, our work has led us into engaging with our early childhood, our preschool programs as well. When you're thinking early intervention, when you know that it's a family's first connection to the school district and to school district programs, as well as the research from the CARRY Institute, we, we have them at the table, they're part of this process. And, and so I do want to point that out because we will start referencing some early childhood things in our, in this presentation. Second thing, too, social-emotional learning resources, curriculum and structures are included in the district MTSS framework. This is a more, this is a newer, I wouldn't say it's, it's out of the blue. We've been working on social-emotional support for several years, but ultimately, having a, you know, we had that group that came in and provide, provided plan on our strategic directions, this was something that came out of that group. And so, really putting that into our strategic directions, we now are more intentional about bringing this into our MTSS plan as a district and starting to institutionalize some of those things, some of the work that we were doing, and being fidelity to those efforts as well. So at this point, I'm going to turn you over to Chrislyn Goodman, who's going to be talking about our work with the CARRY Institute.
Good evening. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about sort of the past and then bring you up to the present. So, in the 2018, 2019 school year, CARRY, so it's the Center for Applied Research and Educational Improvement at the University of Minnesota, worked with us and really helped analyze and then give feedback about where we were in the MTSS building process. And so, if we look at the output from that, from that study, we found that we did have a number of strengths already. We already had some universal screening procedures that were in place. We had progress monitoring for reading, and we had our interventions that supplemented, instead of supplanting universal instruction, just a couple of those highlights. And then some other general findings were that we needed to incorporate that early childhood in. We had some need as far as the infrastructure and how we implement MTSS across the district. And we did have some really good practices that we could build on around database decision-making and using assessments. And we really needed to build out the math end of things. So, this timeline shows what's been going on since that CARRY analysis. So we, in the 19, 2019, 2020 school year, developed an MTSS leadership team. So, we'll go into that in a little bit, but that's a really, I'd say, like, balanced stakeholder group from within the district. And that has been a great group to be able to continually have a feedback loop going on there. We used an MTSS process guide, so this is, I think it's over 40-page document that just really details all the different aspects so that we can make sure that, at a system-wide level, every building has access to the same ideas and foundations and can kind of cross-check and cross-reference thing and make sure the experience is consistent. And then we also put together a multi-year district plan, and I'll show a little bit of that, too, which of course leads to implementation and then evaluating that over time. So, there are five big components of the MTSS framework that Jeff mentioned earlier. So it's assessments, those are essential, as well as database decision-making, the multi-level instruction that Jeff referenced earlier and showed, showed the diamond, the infrastructure and support, and then the fidelity implementation and how that's evaluated over time. And so these next slides show ideas from each of those five categories. So, there are some recommendations around assessment, such as progress monitoring in the area of math, having pre-K to 8th grade math and reading, assessments happen three times a year, and adding a social-emotional screening screener. And we have implemented all of those three. In the database decision-making realm, we're looking to review and update some of the decision-making criteria in reading, math, and SEL, and then using local norms to determine which students need interventions. We're working on both of those. We did just adopt a new screener, so that's FastBridge Learning. And normally, you would want three years' worth of data to really have some solid local norms, so that will continue to happen over time. This is also just a really different year because of the mode that students might have tested in. So some students were able to test at home, some students in the building, and so, we just want to be aware of that going forward, too, if we're really thinking about our local norms. As far as Tier 1 recommendations, we're looking for some systematic instructional approaches in grades K through 2. That has already begun implementation with foundations in the area of phonics for K-2, and looking for some job-embedded training and support around that framework, which is also occurring. There are Tier 2 and 3 recommendations, so these are for students identified that need some types of extra support. So, looking for some evidence-based Tier 2 interventions. So we're always, or we've been implementing press interventions, so those are evidence-based. They're resources that teachers in the elementary schools have, so not just interventionists, but classroom teachers have those as well because sometimes, sometimes we find that the need for that is class-wide, more than just a small group. And we've been doing some analysis of the problem-solving teams, too, and knowing that they need some training and support as well. Again, more recommendations, but it's a great way for me to update you on where, where we are progress-wise. So, having an MTSS framework for all students, I, that is something that we're embedding in every training, I would say, in the teaching and learning department in general. And looking at some master schedule ideas about continuum supports for ELA, math, and SEL, does happen. Again, this year has been just a little bit different because of students not being in the building, but people's eyes are on that, and they're, they're definitely thinking about them, considering those all the time. And then in the fidelity of implementation, we have some support along with that because as I spoke earlier about foundations, phonics in K through 2, part of that implementation does come with its own fidelity and evaluation. So, like, as teachers are teaching their classes and looking, sorry, and analyzing student work, they're also working with their team together to talk about how they are implementing that with fidelity, as well as peer coaches coming in and supporting that, and giving feedback. And, as well as the, at the district level, TOSA's giving feedback to teachers and supporting that as well with training. All right, these are just some snippets from that action plan and timeline. It's a really big Excel spreadsheet, and so it's a little bit too much to show at once, but you can get an idea that all of those five different areas have a different color. And then, those are mapped out over time into fall, winter, spring, and summer for when different actions need to happen. And we've made sort of a shorter, comprehensive list here. So we completed that assessment audit. It was useful for, for that MTSS leadership team to actually get to see and give feedback on some different assessments that we might use. And so that was part of how we got that math assessment and, and shored up something that had been a clear gap from previously. Then, those are the screeners listed below that were part of the results of the assessment audit. We've implemented that foundations program that I talked about. We also have been doing training with FastBridge on different professional development days across the district, starting in the late, or starting actually in the middle of the summer, this past summer. And then looking at how we can support the problem-solving teams and their implementation. And we've also revised and updated, which we do yearly, the school continuous improvement template. All right, I think this is the, no, this is not yet the moment where I turn it over back to Jeff. I wanted to just take a moment and like revisit that MTSS leadership team that I spoke about. The purpose is really to have wide stakeholder input from across the district and for them to be a conduit so that information flows both ways. And this slide shows all of the different job roles that participate in this MTSS leadership team. So you, I won't spend time reading each of them, but you can really see it across all grade levels and all different aspects of the school. There's a really wide variety of stakeholders who are able to give feedback there. All right, and now is the point where I turn it back over to Jeff, thanks so much.
Thanks, Chrislyn. You know, I think the, the one thing I will say as I segue to this is, when you think about those big five and you think about, you know, the recommendations, and then you look at the implementation, and you talk about the training, I just, I want to stress just the amount of appreciation for all staff members in all levels of the organization on this, on these efforts. Because when you think about, I mean, it's easy to put together a presentation, you say, oh, we had a group come in, here's some recommendation, here's some findings, here's some recommendations. But there are some real deep, complex action steps and system-wide work that's at the core of this, that is truly changing the experience for students and changing the ways of how we intervene with. ways of how we intervene with them. When you think back of what is MTSS and why it is important, this takes, this is real systematic work and it does take time. And if you recall that timeline, we have it scoped out to 2025. And so when you think about PD, implementation, continuous improvement, more PD, looking at the results, fidelity, you know, more, I guess, you know, you look at traditional benchmark years. I'm not sure this is a traditional benchmark year to be launching new assessments and some new programs, but nonetheless, we can't wait either. You know, there's urgency with this work and we need to take this into account as we plan moving forward. So bringing us up to this year is, we are, is really looking at our current intervention model. And part of that study was to look at how we have that model in place for students in Prior Lake Savagery schools. Here's where we know classroom teachers are integral to core instruction, tier two, tier one and two interventions and supports to students in the classroom. We need to find more opportunities for targeted intervention and learning without missing core instruction. One of the challenges, and we're not the only district that has this challenge, is when you want, when students need additional support, you're pulling them out of a class or another content area in order to receive that 20 minutes or 30 minutes. And when you think, again, when you think about the connection to school and the experiences that kids are having in school, that is a loss for students when they're missing another content area in order to get additional intervention to get caught up. So how do we find more opportunities for students without missing that core instruction? And then ultimately too, we, I'll be talking about here, this in just a little bit, we have different funding components coming into the district. And we need to maximize, but we also have to align them because those funding streams that are coming into the district, they don't always play nice together. And they do not oftentimes connect and provide supports to all students equally. And so how that comes together is we have to intentionally layer those approaches in order to provide the staffing supports and funding for the students that we need to reach. One of the things in the district that historically we've had over the past few years, the model for our elementary intervention program has been set up as an equal distribution of FTE across the district through title and ADSES funding. And while from an equality standpoint, that has met that, that doesn't necessarily met, that does not necessarily meet the research of providing funding to where the need is greatest. As we think of an equality-based program, we have some schools that are being overserved in intervention, and we also have some buildings that have a higher need that are being underserved. And so that's something that we do have to correct and pay attention to in this process. Secondly, we've also used ADSES funding to fund portions of grades three, four and five teachers because they're doing small group instruction with students. And one of the things, as we've gone through this process, working with our MTSS leadership team, there isn't always generally an awareness as to what is the role and purpose of working in groups, small groups through ADSES. And so we've have a, part of this model review is, again, lining those systems, but also ensuring that the support that we're providing students, people know what it is, we're intentional about it, and we're actually monitoring results of the impact of those intervention strategies for students. So our program definitions, these are the programs I was alluding to. We have Title I. We have Title I funds that come to the district. It's essentially assistance for economically disadvantaged students. We have a couple of schools, Five Hawks and Glendale, that qualify for Title I. Those are the two schools that can receive Title I dollars. If your, if your school does not qualify for Title I, you do not receive those dollars for title. It is based on that free and reduced-price lunch percentage. As I think at the board level, we've talked about this before, one of the things we're monitoring is with lunches and breakfast being free or provided through the federal government during COVID, we have continued to encourage families to fill out these free and reduced-price lunch applications. But we know that as we look at title funds moving forward, those applications are still going to drive the amount of funding we receive from the state. And ultimately, it may drive what the state receives from the federal government as well. And so typically, you know, federal government re-appropriates money based on where economically disadvantaged populations are. That does impact the district. And typically, Minnesota has fared well compared to other states in the country. And so that, occasionally, we do get adjustments where it does impact the amount of funding to the district where we start to receive less. Now, the other funding is ADSES, Alternative Delivery of Specialized Instructional Services. The sole purpose of ABSIS is, ADSES is special education prevention, to keep kids out of special ed. It is for direct service to students. So as you're looking at the data academically and math and in reading, what are those intervention pieces that, like an intervention that we can provide additional support to students in order to slow that path or give them the support they need so it's not into a special education referral? ADSES funds can also be used for social work help or social worker salary and benefits provided they do direct services to student groups. And this is where that piece where SCL comes into play of how we can provide support to students and use these funds in this way as well. Achievement and integration funding, that funding is for demographic disparity focus. Our current allocation, we're using it for secondary deans and Indian education coordinator, East African Somali interpreter and transportation to MinCaps. One of the challenges we identified through our AI plan is we want to provide access for students. MinCaps, as you know, is a program that's housed over in Lakeville. And some of our data was telling us that students were, you had to provide your own transportation. If you did not have the means to do that, you're asking for rides from friends or finding other ways in order to attend MinCaps. And so we do have transport, a bus for, to allow students to participate at MinCaps. As a board, you've approved additional funding for 21, 22. We know we have needs for translation services and language line, and we're, we are, at that point, we're talking more about social-emotional learning supports and academic supports, and that will be part of the plan coming forward in a revised plan shortly. The next two slides, I'm going to talk about opportunities. And these are, these are things, the first one here is on targeted services. Historically, this is your summer school program, where kids are coming in for the summer for a couple of weeks, they're provided additional academic support. Targeted services, while we've done that as a district, can also be offered during the school year. And that's been something, as a district, we've not had a strong targeted services program that's happening during the school year. When you think about that second bullet point, how do we provide more opportunities for intervention without missing core instruction? This is one of those ways. Again, we, it is, since it is after, outside the school hours, we have to think about how we identify students, but we also have to think through that transportation piece as well. And so this is available for kindergarten through eighth-grade students. Targeted services, again, is to prevent school dropout. And so this is something, as we've done our work this year, is identifying beyond our summer program, which we're, which we're planning, and we have those constructs together, how do we continue that at each building in the district, K through eight, all of elementaries and middle school to provide those additional supports for kids? Another one we started talking about is Reading and Math Core. Reading Core is an early childhood through grade three program, largely principals, working with principals because that's more of a site-based opportunity. It's not outside the school day. It is during the school day where you're working with tutors on tutoring kids for short periods of time, but it is something that we are exploring for next year and looking at opportunities to bring to Prior Lake Savagery schools for reading in particular, for early childhood to grade three. And then Math Core at the middle school, looking at how do we fit that into, how do we look at that opportunity for more math-embedded interventions for middle school students? Again, tutors work one-on-one or small groups with students. There are districts around us that are using both Reading Core and Math Core. They're finding some very good success or opportunities. Again, it's how do we connect with kids and how do we find more outreach? And when we think about these as opportunities, if we're not implementing them in Prior Lake Savagery schools, our work is leading us to say, we need to be looking at these opportunities and bringing these opportunities to our kids as we move forward. So that's part of our planning process as well. Something else we've been talking about is more intentional alignment between, with our alternative program format. Many of you know, we have an Atlas program at Twin Oaks Middle School and the Bridges Area Learning Center. We want to, in essence, build a stronger connection. I don't want to say bridge because I don't want to confuse bridges with bridge, but we want to build intentional alignment between the middle school and with Bridges Area Learning Center. As you know, in an ALC, typically for students in ALC for enrollment, they have to be outside, they'd have to be off-track from graduation. And so being eligible for an ALC, you're behind in your, in your high school credits to graduate. The intentionality between alignment and collaboration with the middle school is a little bit, is on the proactive approach. How do I identify and work with families who, they're not off-track of graduation yet, but perhaps are at risk of becoming off-track? So how do we proactively work with families and students and provide program as a transition? Again, not a destination. It wouldn't be our intent that students coming out of eighth grade would go into Bridges for four full years, but it's, to begin that transition where maybe part of their programming is at the ALC, the other part is at the high school, and we're working with, again, getting them to the high school, keeping them on track, but also being more proactive and recognizing where students are at. Dave Brown, Sasha Kuznetsov, Dan Edwards, we started planning and me about what does this look like? We've got a couple of meetings where we started looking at what are opportunities that, out of the summer school and credit recovery, that we can introduce to students next year yet as well. So stay tuned there. And then Dave, Dave Brown at Bridges ALC, working with Shakopee Public Schools and Burnsville Public Schools, their ALC programs, just on deeper levels of collaboration, staff training, planning and program opportunities with kids. Student mobility is, is a factor with ALC programs. We do have students from Shakopee, Burnsville. They do go back and forth between the three districts. So it's a way to keep tabs, but it's also a way to provide a more comprehensive and networked collaboration for, for, for students that need those supports. And I've referenced this before, it's, this is more than one person or more department. This is really the hands of many when we're thinking about program development for, for programs. I mean, staff are, have a place at all levels in this in order to create a program to fidelity and a program that positively impacts the achievement, social, emotional and behavioral components and experience for kids. On the SCL part, we are looking at our elementary and social worker FTE allocations between special education, ADSES and general fund. And again, it's a way to look at how are we currently providing social, emotional support aligned to the IEP? But also are there, how can we find more opportunities where students who are not in special education, we can also provide groups for SCL, mental health, friendship groups, social groups, things like that, so that it's more of that proactive and preventative approach. And then also working with Gen Ed students for behavioral intervention and restorative practices. Model challenges, current and foreseeable, the things I'm going to highlight there is, you know, as you get down, you see that sub-bullet point, funding does vary from year to year. Compensatory title funding, English learner funding. And all of those typically can be driven by socioeconomic status, again, those free and reduced-price lunch applications that are in, as well as, you know, diverse student populations. How our diversity as a district does impact some of those funding streams as well. Transportation is a challenge that we're going to have to continue to, to problem-solve. That's not an inexpensive challenge to problem-solve. But again, how are there other ways that we can find, allow access and provide access for students? And then the other one here is more legislatively, we have some challenges as well that in COVID, they were able to waive, simply because, again, over COVID, we were able to provide targeted services virtually for families. And I know, you know, legislatively, there's been a lot of talk about extending some of those waivers in order to provide a DLA component for, for students next year. Well, much in the same way for targeted services, if there, some families and students do thrive in that virtual setting, and it does eliminate that need for transportation. And so the current waiver for tutoring through targeted services expires at the end of June. There has been some discussion that perhaps that waiver might be extended through the summer. We certainly hope it is because that would certainly allow another level of, of planning and, and opportunity for our students. So our next steps, looking at title and ADSES allocated to schools based on school data, looking at the social worker piece for SCL, leveraging the expertise of staff to look at targeted services year-round, as well as reading and math core, and then continuing to work on the alignment between Bridges and our middle schools. So when we think about that too, targeted services brings more increased support to our students, as well as reading and math core, and looking at those opportunities as we factor that into our, again, comprehensive MTSS approach to supporting kids. With that, I turn it back over to you. Chris Lynn, is there anything that I missed or?
Got it.
All right. I will turn it over to you.
Okay.
For discussion.
All right. Thank you. A lot of information, which is great. I would just, anybody have any questions, comments? Anything? Mary, go ahead.
So one of the, one of the things that, that first of all, I loved is that the bus was being provided for MinCaps, which is one of the primary reasons why a lot of the kids could not participate in that. But I did want to ask about a question that this kind of corresponds to, and that's, when we were talking about targeted services, we had a discussion in one of our committee meetings about the extended time compensatory funding. Is that something that would be used for the targeted services that occur before and after school?
So targeted services funding is, is different than compensatory funding. I might ask Julie to come up and just clarify some of the differences between that, but students that are in targeted services, we do get funding from the state, and we use that to offset the costs associated with the teachers. And again, it's to be able to provide that program. I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know how closely compensatory and targeted services funding come together, but I can do more research on that and bring that back to you or to the board.
Thank you. I just noted that some of the other schools were getting that extended time. I asked about that, but then I wasn't sure that it was, you know, related to this.
Yeah, that's okay.
Yes, we do get targeted services funding for students in grades K8. And so anything else that they have at the ALC at the high school, they can get additional funding there too for makeup classes and that type of thing, but it isn't related to compensatory funding.
Thank you. And then I had another question. So the reading and the math course, I've done both of those. They're incredible programs, but it does require people to get trained, certified, all that kind of stuff. And we do have surrounding districts that do it. Are, is that something that would start to, is this, is this an actual plan now or is this something that we're thinking about doing? How, how is all this going to come about? And how will the individuals that volunteer for it here get trained? Would it be at the school or would they do the online training like they started doing last year?
So at this point, we're in the exploratory phase of reading and math core. We're very fortunate. We've, a couple of our elementary principals have had experience with both of those programs in previous districts. And so there's an application phase, and then we're into working with those organizations for finding those tutors. And it is going to take some time. This, this does take, like I say, we're in the application, the research, and part of that is going to tell us how we can move forward, how quickly we can move forward. Ideally, we'd like to have this in place by next year, but we want to make sure by bringing in a new program that we have the supports behind it to be sure that it's a successful program within Prior Lake Savagery schools, working with, with kids. So more details will be forthcoming in that.
And I had two more questions.
Okay.
I promise. When we're talking about the MTSS, and I know that we started this a couple of years ago, and it really started heavy. of years ago, and it really started heavy, particularly with the phonics program and the results of that. Now, one of the issues that we've had has been moving it up through the grades, but also that huge break between fifth and middle school, and trying to get that group together to really transition the kids, the students, as well as the teacher knowledge about the students. And then, of course, we've, and then embedding the social emotional learning, one of the other challenges we have is it's much different at the elementary level, where the teachers see the kids all day long, more or less. But then, when they get to the middle school, it's less. And in high school, some teachers only see them for like an hour a day. And yet, we're trying to embed that social emotional learning. How has, you know, obviously, the pandemic put a, put a little bit of a wrinkle in that plan moving forward. But where are we in that continuum of trying to compensate for that on the SEL side, and also get that bridge from the elementary to the middle school?
Yeah, I think I'll just work backwards. So, at the high school, just because it's a great year to have lots of new programs, we did also institute the BAR, so it's building assets, reducing risks. And part of that program is a really strong concentration on making sure that, especially at the ninth grade and 10th grade levels, that students are in sort of houses, you can think of it that way, so that there's not the same potential for students to, you know, just be going from one teacher to another, but rather, a whole group of students has, has a same group of teachers. They meet together and talk about students and student needs from that group. So that's been one way to address that at the high school. Middle school has an advisory period to also make sure that there's kind of a home base for every student. And then, the core instruction at the elementary is the responsive classroom. So that's, those are sort of like the base levels, like where everything starts. And then, your question about like, sort of transfer of information from fourth grade to fifth grade?
Fifth to sixth.
Sorry, I meant, I meant fifth grade to the middle school at sixth grade. We are actually reviewing how CUM files are amassed and transferred. So that is something that we're, like actively working on with the small group right now.
And my last.
I would say too, just one more, you know, every year, there's just a host of transition meetings that are happening between our elementary staff and our middle school staff. You know, there's, it's beyond the registration process, but really, again, talking about students who have, you know, again, some of those additional supports, additional needs, those conversations are, are, are in place. Same thing with eighth grade to ninth grade. And so, the, the handoff between elementary and middle school, middle school and high school is, is one that, that's, our staff takes an incredible amount of pride and incredible amount of diligence in making sure that as students are making those transition, it's successful, kids are aware, families are aware, as well as, if we know that kids are coming that need additional needs, are there some things on the front end that we can address to help ease that transition moving forward? So. You had another question. I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, no, thank you for that, for that addition. My last question was when we're talking about, let's say, the ALCs, how does the Southwest Metro play into that? Or are we going to be, because I know there are some issues about partnerships with other schools and things like that, and where the, you know, we're using the Southwest Metro and their massive ALC as well as their tech ed?
So with, with Southwest Metro, we are, we are a partner with Southwest Metro District 288. The ALC is designed to provide support and service to our students who are behind in their graduation requirements. So, it is a, you know, 288 is, or Southwest Metro is a cooperative that if students need additional program, programming beyond what we're able to provide here at Prior Lake Savagery Schools, we're able to work with them within that cooperative setting to provide that service. Typically, that's more within the special ed realm, like if it's a level four program for additional support, or maybe chemical health, you know, some of those types of components. From the tech ed side of things, Bridges does, you know, we do have students going over to our high school for tech ed classes. You know, you know, just because you're at Bridges doesn't exclude you from participating in courses at the high school. And so, anything that we're able to do here for our students, and our students can participate in, we fully invest in ensuring that they can. But if there's something that they cannot, if they need that additional support, like a level four or additional special ed support, we would look to Southwest Metro. I would also defer to, to Dr. Stallow if I missed anything.
Yeah, I think the only other thing that, and Jeff, you spoke to this in your, in your presentation, was that collaboration with other districts. That is something that Dave Brown is working with Shakopee and Burnsville, because there was some, MDE did a review of some of the practices and procedures last year that were in place, and there was a protocol that hadn't been followed. So Dave has been meeting, but, but that really is Shakopee and Burnsville School District, and I don't think Southwest Metro is a part of that collaboration. Can I, can I?
Well, I have a couple of questions.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. No.
I just had a question, and I just want to, so this isn't necessarily, because we, we're getting the same amount of dollars, or we're getting whatever dollars we're getting. Are we realigning things to do the, okay, so are we discontinuing some things?
No. We are looking, we're not, one of the things that we have to look at with our dollars and with our funding source, we do have to do some realignment. Some things that we've been doing are out of alignment. So with the Carey Institute, looking at best practice, but also part of the application process, we need to ensure that the dollars we have are following where the needs are. So, it's not a subtraction, but it is going to look different because of how we have to align the dollars moving forward. So, for example, the example I can share with you with special education, one of the things we've identified within our social work is their FTE largely, in many cases, is associated with special education. That's fine, but some of our caseloads have adjusted. And so, they might be, their FTE proportionality might be over and above what they have, what the amount of service they're providing special education students. And so, looking at ADSS dollars to re, to correct that, so that they're able, again, to continue providing support to special education students, but also so that they're funded proportionally to special education correctly, and then using ADSS dollars to, again, provide a service to gen ed students. So technically, that would be an add in how we're providing support to students in that way.
Because the gen ed students are getting?
Correct.
I'm just trying to figure out how this all, financially. I mean, I, I get it. I mean, I get it, the support. I mean, to me, I, I mean, it sounds great, I think, you know, doing, but when you're adding something, I think of cost, and then I also think of workload. And so, what's coming off to relieve so that we can make this successful, because this would lead to my next question, which would be, how do we know that this is going to be successful? What are our targets? Like, how are we, how are we going to measure success in a year, you know, from now? I guess is my question.
Well, that is part of our multi-year plan with MTSS. It's in our action plan, of course, very well. And, and I think therein lies the work and process that we've been on, working with our, with the Carey Institute, as well as the MTSS leadership team. I mean, the work that we're aligning is, we're aligning programs per the requirements, aligning to the research and best practice, and aligning the systems and expertise within our district, putting our fingerprints on how this works. So there, as, it's not like we're just moving forward and saying, gosh, this sounds like a neat thing to try. Research is behind this. The requirements and the program components are behind this as well. And we know that we're going to have to make adjustments moving forward as we implement and, and, because the data's going to tell us how we need to pivot.
Well, and is there a perception, I mean, right or wrong, that, I mean, and I know with special ed and other programs, people get pretty, you know, sensitive to it, which I totally get, that there's loss of something? You know what I'm saying? Because we're shifting things, like what is happening there to, you know, make sure that we're not, that kids aren't losing out? Do you know what I mean? Which it sounds like that's what we're focusing on. But with a change, you know what I mean? Like, what kind of?
So, from, from a special education student, for the program they receive, it's in their IEP. So there's not a loss there as far as students are getting less minutes or less support within an IEP.
So as, as a parent, if I'm a parent of a special ed student, I'm not going to see any, I mean, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to feel any different, basically.
No, because what's, your child is going to get the services that's outlined in their, in their child's IEP.
And if I'm a gen ed parent, like a general, that I don't have an IEP, I don't even know what's happening, but there's going to be extra support.
Right. So as we look at some of the different supports, and I think there, you know, as we think about SEL, and that's the example that, you know, I'm sharing with you now, coming, we know that there are some things with mental health and social, even prior to COVID, we know that mental health was an area that we needed to start spending more time. We, we had students coming that were not on IEPs that had some different mental, mental issues or, or things that we, that they needed additional support. And we started creating some of those structures. But again, the fidelity of those structures wasn't necessarily uniform across the district, relative to how they were supporting students, the job descriptions and components. Like, this is a way to build a consistent level of support for students outside of special education in order to get some of those additional supports that they need. Same thing with title. Title is an academic support for students as a preventative measure. ADSS will still be, we also will be using ADSS to provide academic support to students too. So, as I mentioned in the presentation, Glendale and Fivehawks are Title I schools. Other schools will be receiving ADSS dollars in order to provide academic support, structures for their kids.
Okay.
With regards to ADSS, what did we do last year, or what did we do in previous years? Was, how did this work, per what you just said? Because I, now, I, I get what you're saying, and I just wanted.
Well, I think there was inequities, is what she was saying. I mean, and I know that. I mean, for.
But is this new funding?
Right. Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. So.
Sorry. I want to make sure other people.
To the question of how does this work?
Yeah.
That's a whole nother presentation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. But I can share with you this. And, and I'll try to do a good, I'll try to, to set a baseline here. So, earlier in the slide, we had talked about ADSS offsetting funding proportions of grade, third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers, because they were doing small group instruction. One of the things we identified is, teachers were, were doing small group instruction, but it was not a systematic intervention support for students. And so, we were using the funding to offset teacher salaries and benefits to provide support and teaching to students, which they were doing. But we weren't, when you think about the big five, and you think about fidelity, you think about alignment and consistency, it was not a successful program in that way. We did not have universal results that we could track. We had some students, because of, of some teachers were making incredible gains, we had other students that were not. And so, that's one of the gap areas we identified. And so, shifting that funding to our interventionists and to our, to our, to social workers is better alignment for academics, social, emotional. Our third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers will still be doing small group instruction for tier one instruction and core instruction. It's just with ADSS, we needed a tighter, we needed a tighter accountability to those funds in order to, on those preventative supports for students.
Okay. Let's, I'm, I'm going to, Dr. Stallow, talk here.
Jeff, will you go back to the slide of the diamond?
Yeah.
Because I'm going to try to make a connection. This is not the, the work of MTSS, the work of, it initially started with RTI, right? Response to Instruction. MTSS then really became this more holistic place of both academic and social, emotional. So if you think about PBIS, responsive classroom, some of those social, emotional things. So I also want to link this to the work that we've been doing for years around professional learning, communities, or learning teams. So if you look in that middle area, that's really, question number one, is what is it we want kids to know and be able to do of the learning team questions? Question number two is, how do we know? So that middle area is our core instruction. All kids, all of our staff, standards-based instruction, standards-based assessments. Now, we know that there are kids who, right? Question number three, what do we do if kids haven't learned this yet? That's where we say, okay, what are some of those interventions? And again, it might be some differentiation that's being done, or it might be really into those more evidence-based, research-based interventions. We've been doing those. We've been tracking that data. We've been looking at that data. To Jeff's point, the piece that we found in the Carey study was just, we didn't have a comprehensive system, everybody doing the same kinds of things. If it's concerned with comprehension, what's the evidence-based, research-based intervention that we're going to do? How do we ensure that it's being implemented with fidelity? And how are we going back to progress monitor that to make sure that the gains are being made? Question number four of our learning teams, what if the kids already know this? And that's where to Jeff's earlier point around those extensions or enrichments as we move along this triangle or this diamond. So I, the work that this group has done has been absolutely vital, important, and amazingly needed in order to really build that core system to say, hey, how are we ensuring that all of our kids are learning through a standards-based curriculum in the way that we want? And how are we, how are we supporting them correctly? And I just wanted to be really, really clear, not a new program, not new work, but we didn't have before this year, a social and emotional screener. So of course, with COVID, let's put that in place too, right? But that's part of that fast bridge saber. So we're getting all of those pieces in place so that we really can have a systematic approach. And, and Mary, your question, right? How do we know it's going to work? We're going to know it's going to work when we're really ensuring that those interventions for each kid are truly meeting their needs, and they're getting the gains in both math and reading that we want them to have. And if those interventions aren't working, then we're going to have a cycle through progress monitoring to say, okay, we've tried that intervention for six weeks. We aren't seeing the gains. Is there something else that we need to look at? So I just, I wanted to connect that to our learning teamwork, because it's such a critical part of what our teachers do and the data that they explore on, on a daily and weekly basis. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Yep, go ahead, Amy.
Just a comment, and this is something, you know, we can talk about later too, but we talked mostly about intervention, and the diamond shows enrichment as well. And, you know, and I know it's the intervention, a lot of money behind that. It's a, it is a big concern that's near and dear to me too, and important in our schools. But we haven't talked at all about enrichment, and that's part of the diamond. So I don't, I don't know if there's more to say there, or if that's something for another time.
Yes, there is more coming, and there is more to say there. So our model that we're looking at this year is intentionally looking at intervention. The other side of the diamond, we're going to start paying some attention to that as well, too. Again, part of that multi-year, making sure that we're, the implementation plan for this, it does take time, it does take some steps, and, but yes, there is more to come on that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, next up is the budget adjustment process update.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Good morning, board members. Tonight, we are going to share with you information that you have seen at the January 25th and the February 22nd on board study sessions. What we realized, however, is we have not formally presented this at a board meeting. So we wanted to be sure that we were able to share this with you again, with the public, and we'll update you. And actually, I'm going to be seeking some direction as we move through the, the presentation. So with that, as you know, our strategic plan is our promise to our community, and as we strive to meet the goals and the strategic directions that we have laid out, not only is one of those goals fiscal responsibility, but also it is our goal that we're able to meet those other priority results and indicators of success through our, our fiscal responsibility and using our resources really well. So tonight, what we'll do is we'll review the state of the district's budget, and review, and be updated on the budget adjustment process, which you know is in place, but we'll just let you know where we are at with that. Just to get kind of the overview, once again, the district is engaged in a budget adjustment process in order to establish financial security over the next two years to solve for currently a $4 million budget deficit. For this current year, the direction that we have at this point is to engage in a budget reduction process of $2.5 million, which gets us to slightly over 9% of our fund balance, which is on the lower end of that, but remains within the policy set by the board. Couple of things that, that are important to note as we look at that fund balance policy is staying between 8 and 12%. We also have, want to be clear, that revenue continues to not keep pace with expenditures, and we have been trying to solve for that in a number of ways. Last year, as you recall, we also went through a budget reduction process of about, our budget adjustment process of about $3 million. For the current year, what we've worked on in order to get our For the current year, what we've worked on in order to get ourselves in the best possible place through the pandemic is we have revised the budget. You, you approved that, and we offset addition, to offset some of the additional budget adjustments that we would need, including reduced budgets for our schools and many of our departments. There were some positions that we haven't hired for, and then we also used federal funding to help support some of our work. So just a couple key messages for you to remember and for our community to remember is the enrollment loss due to COVID-19. We have about 262 students from the 2020, 21 projected budgeted projections. As I said before, state funding that has not kept pace with inflation and with COVID, that has also caused a shortfall in the state's budget, which we know that we heard an update on since we put this, this presentation together. What we have assumed, what the board has assumed in terms of, of our basic form, basic education formula for next year, again, we're looking at the two-year biennium, is a 0% assumption for FY '22 and a 1% for FY '23. At this point, we, I'm not recommending that we change that, but we'll have a conversation later about that budget adjustment amount. I know with the surplus, there's been some questions about that. If that's, it's, if that's assumption that wants to be, that we want to look at at this point. And then also, we've increased expenditures due to COVID. They were offset by the CARES, the ESAR, and the GIRS funding so that we could provide the PPE needed, the additional staffing, and the childcare and technology that we needed. So with that, I will hand it over to Julie for an enrollment update.
Evening, board members. I'm Dr. Stalow. Tonight, we're going to give you another update on the enrollment. You can see on March 1st that we're at 8,687, which is still about 20 students above what our budgeted number is. That's held pretty steady this last month. It's down a few students, and it's actually up since February 1st, about seven students. So we have gained a few. We also gave you a report in the middle of February, and we're down two kids since then. But overall, for the month of February, we were up a little bit. This is what we had projected for enrollment, bringing back some of the students that we have lost for various reasons at the elementary level, some of those students coming back, anticipating that, along with our normal increase in student enrollment. So we're projecting 188 students this, for next year.
Evening, board members. Dr. Stalow. One of the processes that we do every year that can be related to, and is of course related to budget, is annual rightsizing. And I know I've covered this before, but always take the opportunity to cover it again. So this is a process that we do every year. And that, in that process, if you're a growing district, you add staff. And if you've plateaued or you're a declining district, you have a tendency to reduce FTEs. I think the take-home message with this, for me, is in this situation, you aren't increasing anyone's workload or decreasing their workload, it's staying the same because your target here is to align average class size targets with FTEs. So that's what we do annually, every year. We go through that process with, with principals when we, when we have those targets and we shoot for those targets and we work through that whole process with staffing in order to do that. Last year, we did the same thing, and we realized a reduction in FTEs in order to do that. But again, this process is about not changing any class size average, which is normally where you will gain additional. If it came to a position where you're looking at budget cuts, one way to realize that is then to reduce FTE and increase class size. So as an example, this graph will show you what our average class size has been for the last several years. You can see that it's relatively consistent between 22 and 23. This is the elementary. I just use elementary because it's one that we have lots of FTEs in, and you have classes that are pretty much self-contained. So to use it as an example is, it's a relatively good example to do. And so you can see that, and then if you look at this last year, what you have is a average reduction in that average class size, and that was a result of the students that we didn't get, that Julie referenced there. It doesn't look like much, but again, roughly 0.1 change in that average class size is one FTE. And in this calculation, we only use classroom teachers for this one right here. It doesn't include all the licensed support staff. It doesn't include principals because they have a license. It only is the actual teachers in front of kids in classrooms. So this would be one of the ways that when you have a budget reduction to do, if you do annual rightsizing, that may realize some of those, some of those funds. And then at some point, if you don't have enough there, then you may have to look at actual budget cuts, which in the, in the classroom world, outside of all the support staff and admin cuts you might make, is usually an increase in average class size targets.
As part of our budget process, the board had approved our revenue assumptions. And when this happened in January, the November forecast showed a $1.6 billion deficit spend over the next two years for the state of Minnesota. And we now know that in February, they came out with a $1.6 billion surplus. So we projected a 0% on the basic formula in January. And so that'll be something that the board may want to look at. Is that a change that you now want to make because we have some updated information? And so that may look different to the board and maybe something that you want to consider for FY '22. And then we have 1%. These are assumptions again, 1% in FY '23 and 24 and 2% in FY '25. In-law is an increase of special ed revenue of 4.5%. So it's just on that portion of that revenue. We do know that we've increased our achievement and integration revenue by $400,000, and we're also including reinstating lost revenue from gate receipts and other fees. And we anticipate a reduction in Title I, as we have talked about earlier tonight. Expenditure assumptions, again, we had some one-time reductions in the current year, and so we reinstated those for the budget for next year. We do anticipate a 6.6% increase in our health insurance. We have an increase of 1% on our transportation contract. Utility costs are trending 5% and property liability is around 8. Here's the enrollment projection. Here's the financials of this, and it's just very high level again. But if you really want to look at what it looks like on a graph form, you can see how quickly that blue, which is our unassigned fund balance, which is what we utilize when we're determining what our fund balance policy is, is based on the total expenditures and whatever's left in that unassigned fund balance. So you can see, we quickly go below in FY '23. So we have one year of very, and actually below our fund balance policy, but also it really quickly goes down from there. For revenues, as you can see, about 63% of our total funding comes from general education aid. So when we talk about getting 1% on revenue from the state, it's on that 63%. So it's not on all of the revenue that the district receives. We do know that we're going to see on that 11%, we should see a 4.5% increase on that 11%. And then the other pieces, there wouldn't be any increases in that area. Only if we have increased student population would we see additional revenue. Our expenditure, you can see the majority of our expenses are salaries and benefits. We are a service industry, so it's an expectation that that's what we're spending our money on is people. So purchase services are 12%. That also was a lot of times people, transportation, it's our, it's our substitute teacher costs. It's, it's also utilities and those kinds of things that we purchase. Supplies and materials are a very small percentage. Capital expenditures are a little bit larger this year simply because we're finishing up our construction projects, and we did anticipate some spending there, and so that's a little bit higher than normal. This is the COVID funding that we've received currently. You can see, we've talked about this quite a bit over the past year, really. It's been a year now that we've been receiving these funds. We have been allocated that $772,000. However, we haven't received any information about how we can spend, we haven't received information about when we'll receive that. We do have some knowledge about how we can spend those funds. For district comparison, this is a revenue comparison. This comes right from our audit. And this, I kind of highlighted those two lines with the arrows and showing our property taxes in this district. The property taxes for our general fund are significantly smaller than the other seven county metro area. But if you look at our debt service, which is the second arrow, you can see that our taxes for debt service are higher. And the reason that our tax, our taxes are higher for debt services because we're a growing district. And so we, we typically, when you see a growing district, you'll see a little bit higher taxes in that area simply for the building bonds. But overall, between the two pieces of which we tax our taxpayers, we still tax them about $400 per student less than the seven county metro. This is also from the audit, the expenditure comparison, that we spend about $2,000 less per student than the average seven county metro school district. This is the operating referendum comparisons, and you can see that we're towards the bottom at $623, almost $624 per pupil. A lot of our districts that we are compared to on other areas of, for testing and those types of things, we're significantly less in revenue that we receive than those districts as part of an operating referendum. And when you look at a technology levy comparison, the same thing in this area is that we are significantly less. We don't have a technology levy at this time, and other districts do have them. And when we do compare ourselves to them, as far as being able to supply those things, it's, they do have the funding that we, we don't per student. If you look at the state revenue comparison, I thought this was always interesting. When you do some comparison looking from year to year, you can see in 2018, 19, this is right after we passed the operating referendum in the Empire Lake Savage Schools, we were ranked 241, and just three short years later, we're down to 256 again. So we had, have slid back, even though we have passed an operating referendum. You can see other districts are also doing that, and so we are sliding backwards.
Thanks, Julie. As we look at the, the next steps, just a couple of things, we're going to keep watching the budget. We're going to keep watching what's happening at the state level in terms of, of legislative action, and we'll keep watching what's happening at the federal level as well. The slide that's up here is again, on February 22nd, the board provided direction on, in order to look at how do we solve for that $4 million deficit? What portion of that do we do in this first year? The direction at that time was looking at a $2.5 million budget adjustment, which gets us just slightly over 9% of the fund balance. So like other districts, the strategies that the board has, has provided direction for us to employ are using some of our reserve, some of our fund balance, using that ESAR II funding, and Julie shared a little bit about that in terms of the amount that we know, and when we get it, we're not sure. But using that, those COVID relief dollars to offset some of that, and then also that rightsizing process. So really, those three strategies get us on our way to looking at what we can do to, to continue having some financial security. I know there were several questions from board members as we were talking about that amount and what that looks like in terms of maintaining a fund balance that the board's comfortable with. We talked about that quite a bit at the last study session. And what's changed, what's different is we are continuing to learn a little bit more, to Julie's point, about the, the surplus of the state budget. So one of the things that board members have asked me, and actually, it was one of the items that came from staff as well on some of their inputs, and we've got, we're continuing to look at that, but asked about, you know, either the board going below the fund balance policy or lower on the fund balance policy. So one of the things that I wanted to ask you this evening, as we continue the process, and the next slide is the timeline of the process that will be continuing. But a question to the board is if there is interest or direction of the board looking at reducing that slightly above 9% fund balance to an 8.5% fund balance? And if we change that current $2.5 million budget adjustment to $2 million, that's where we would end. So again, I know you gave clear direction at the last board meeting. I know that there have been some changes, so I wanted to bring back, just for a conversation to the board this evening, about that. So you, we'll let you, I'll let you think about that for just a minute while we look at the timeline. We're currently in the middle of, staff members have given input, about 189 items came forward from staff. And what we're currently doing Friday, today, and tomorrow is that leaders are working with their building instructional leadership teams, as well as with team leads or district services staff departments to continue to look at, you know, prioritizing a little bit. What are those things that they can control to really look at? So we'll be looking at all of that data in the upcoming months or weeks, days, as we get to March 22nd. So I'll go back and ask that question again, if there is any, any interest of, of the board looking at any changes as we continue to work forward toward that March 22nd study session into the April 12th board meeting, where we'll be seeking approval on budget adjustment recommendations.
Can I just ask clarifying? So as far as the timeline, though, like you're in the process of meeting with built team, team leads and going over that input, right?
Yep, that's what, yep. We've gotten the input, but now what we're doing is the built teams, the team leads and the departments are looking at the input from their staff and looking at district themes as well to, to look at any specifics that they then want to bring to that next level. So yeah, that doesn't change the amount. If you make a change on the amount, it does not change the process at all. It's just, you know, $500,000 less that we would have to be looking at right now for adjustments while also keeping the fund balance within the policy of 8.5.
Okay. All right, so I'll, I'll start a little bit off with conversation and just, I know we've reiterated it, but obviously, we had a detailed conversation about this at the last study session. And as far as what's changed, I mean, I guess I might ask Julie this question. You know, what's your opinion on, there were things we were talking about, the shift, you know, you know, those kinds of things. Like, for me, I don't want, borrowing is a, I don't want to borrow money, basically, to make our, our bills. So if, if there is, you know, your opinion on if you feel like the shift, and maybe we don't need the shift any longer, you know, your opinion is they won't need to shift us so that we can be pretty confident in the fact that we'll get 90% of our money in the first year and, you know, the tail 10% and continue with that so that we wouldn't be forced into borrowing?
I mean, I can't make any guarantees.
No, I, I know, I know that, but I mean.
I just want to make sure that, I, you know, I, I can't make any guarantees, but it, the change in the forecast is to me a big, significant change. And so when you look at, you know, what will the legislature do as far as funding for school districts? What kind of funding are they getting from the federal government in terms of COVID relief funding? There is money coming again for a third package from the federal government. And how much will schools receive? I don't know. It looks like it's going to the FCC in terms of, for helping students get access to internet and those kinds of things. So I don't know how much money schools themselves will get, but there is additional funding in other areas of that package as well for states and counties, those types of things. So a $1.6 billion surplus is a lot different than a $1.6 billion deficit. So in terms of trying, you know, the state is on a cash basis. They do their funding on a cash basis, so if they have the cash, most likely, they won't need to shift us because they have the funds. And so my thought is we most likely at this point. And so my thought is we most likely at this point, that would be off the table. I can't guarantee that, but at a surplus, and if they can make their cash a balanced budget, then they would most likely not need to shift school districts.
And so if we maintained eight, eight and a half percent fund balance throughout the year, we wouldn't need to, given that scenario, we wouldn't need to borrow them?
Most likely, we would not need to.
That's just a big thing for me because I just think it's ridiculous for us to borrow money to pay interest to, for, you know, when we don't need to.
Right.
So, and you know, we've had assigned funds that have had, we've had for cash flow that we've had to eat through now. So the fact that we haven't had to do it through the last 10 years is, you know, I'd rather keep it going. Yeah, so I think as far as Jermaine for the conversation for the board members, you know, it's just where you're feeling as far as, you know, I think some of the, I, obviously Dr. Stahl's had conversations with board members, but even from staff input is that, you know, they're asking us to sharpen the pencil, I think, and really look at, do we really feel like we need to have the full 2.5 or can we get away with something a little bit less? So I don't know people's thoughts on that as far as where they're at. Go ahead, Mary. Yeah, Michael, after you.
I just, first of all, I do have a thought on it, but I wanted some clarifying questions. First of all, our assumptions coming in, the 188 students is built into the assumption for still the $2.5 million cut, right?
Right, but with the right sizing of the staff, that will help us, we'll, we'll only bring back staff when we see the students coming. So that will help us, put us on a little bit more even playing ground. In the past two years, we've said, this is what we think we're going to have for student enrollment. And so we had the staffing for that right away. With the right sizing of the staffing, we only will have the staffing for, and correct me if I'm wrong.
Oh, please.
That we will just have it for those kids we actually have enrolled in the district. And as we see those students coming in, then we'll start hiring our staff.
Could you help me understand, when you said 188 students, is that based upon our current number? Is that based upon the estimated number we thought we were going to come in with last year? And then some, where is the actual number?
We've talked about this a little bit in the past. We looked at two scenarios, one where we just would look at what is that enrollment gain based on a seven-year historic average? And so we looked at that, and that would be 70 students. So over the last seven years, we took that average of those student, that student growth, and we applied it to next year and then in the following years, and that was 70 students. And then what we did was we looked at, where did we see students that were enrolled in July of last year? Actual students that we had enrolled in the district? And where did we see decreases for the current year? And so we plugged back in about 60 to 70% of those students coming back at the elementary level. Only at that level for those several grade levels, first grade, second grade, third, fourth, that were, that we saw significant decreases in those enrollment there. And then we added back in that same seven-year average of enrollment. And so that's where we came up with 188 students.
My question is a little bit more basic. In the beginning of this year, we estimated 8925 with, with the 3895 coming in K through five. We obviously didn't make that. If we looked at hard numbers, K through five, six through eight, nine through 12, is that where, is the revised budget? Where did we add the, I, I understand what you're saying about the calculation going through, but I'm trying to figure out is what is our net that we're expecting to come in with 188 students?
Based on the budget.
Okay, so is that 8,900 students total? Is that 8,700 because, you know, we've got all those graphs? I'm just trying to.
8663 plus 188.
It's where you think we're going to end this year.
Thank you, that's the number you're using.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because where we end.
It keeps moving.
Yeah, it's where we end, it's plus 188.
Thank you.
Where you budgeted end.
Right, it's not the actual.
Right, it's where we budgeted.
Anticipate the budget ending and adding 188 students.
It's not the actual students, it's the budget at the moment, right.
Okay, thank you.
So if we end up with 20 extra students, it's still based off of.
Right.
So if we didn't lose any more students is what I'm saying this year.
You'd be up 20.
It's still based off of the budgeted number of.
And we have 20 extra, that's basically from right now.
And, and we're basing the budget decrease based upon where we are right now, like you said, not with the extra 188.
The current student enrollment.
Right, the student, that's where we're basing a lot of our budget on.
Right, is where we're at right now.
What would the scenario look like if we got at least 1% from the state? Because we're, right now, we're basing it on zero, we got 188. I'm trying to just understand the swing that could happen.
$648,000 additional revenue.
Plus the 700 that we're going to receive.
The S R.
The S R, right.
Right.
Okay. And that still leaves us with a budget reduction anyways, even if that comes up. So over we are today, I'm just looking at the baseline. Okay.
Right.
Okay. And I, based upon that, I would be comfortable going down to eight and a half, eight to eight and a half percent.
Like a $2 million reduction. How are others feeling?
Better than nine, yeah.
Michael?
I would agree. I'd also be comfortable with eight and a half and going down to two. And part of my thinking is, you know, that graph on page 16 scares me. I know we're not supposed to look way out when the fund balance drops way down, right? But Director Drew has put the fear of God in me a couple of meetings ago about what can happen if our fund balance gets too low. I have been in a few meetings the last few weeks with MSBA and AMSD. And they've talked about the state surplus. And while it's tempting to want to say, let's, let's adjust our percentage that we're budgeting for, say we get 1%. I've heard a lot of caution too, because the state is getting one-time funding. It's not using it to be able to project down the next few years. And to be cautious about that, also, we won't know, if I understand correctly, what that number is before we have to approve our budget here in the district. So I am really excited and hopeful that we're going to get 1%. I'm afraid to put that hope in where I play with the budget. But I do feel like as a board, we can address where we have control, where it fits with policy is we're in charge of fund balance. If we can maintain that eight and a half, if we can have the hope, maybe, that we'll get 1%, but let's not use that in our assumptions. But if we can maintain eight and a half and just do 2 million in cuts, I would be comfortable with that. That's where I feel like we have more control and more certainty. And in my mind, nothing has changed yet in terms of what our state is going to give us. I am hopeful. I just don't know if the hopeful makes me comfortable enough to change numbers much more than going down to a $2 million cut.
Anyone else? Enrique, thoughts?
Yeah, I know it's tempting to look farther down the field, but we can't really predict the future. We, we know what we have right now. We know that there are some good news potentially coming our way, but we have no idea what that looks like. So I think making adjustment, at least making the case to adjust down to eight and a half percent and recognize a $2 million budget adjustment seems to be the appropriate one. And that will be less, I would say detrimental for staff, detrimental to our existing programming and just the overall strategic direction. While just kind of having that word with all of, this too can change at some point. Just having that awareness is definitely key.
Okay. Jonathan?
So I'll, I'll concur with most of the sentiment. I do have maybe a little bit more hesitation in going from talking about two and a half to two if, if we are wrong. And, and what we're anticipating slash hoping happens. There are a lot of ifs here. I mean, there's kind of a lot of things that we are assuming go right. We're assuming that kids come back that left. We're assuming some little growth. There is definitely a part of me that kind of prefers to stick with the two and a half where we were. I would much rather have good surprises that make next year easier because we took our medicine, a little bit more of it now. I also understand ultimately, in a lot of cases, that means people. And I know that that, that's a hard thing to stomach too. So I'm, I am, if I were waving a magic wand and making a decision entirely on my own, I'd probably stick with the target at two and a half. I'm, I am good with, as a group, us making a decision at a different number and getting behind that and feeling good about it.
Julie, Amy, any thoughts?
I mean, I'll go ahead. I, I kind of agree with Jonathan. I, I love the fact that we want to keep teachers and staff in our buildings. And, but I've heard the talk that it was like, we're going to cut two and a half this year because we're going to have to get to four by next year. And so in my own personal life, I would probably just cut quicker so I can make next year less painful. But I also agree that we have kids coming back to our buildings. We want to bring them back. We want to get all the students back. You know, we want to support the staff that has worked tirelessly. So that would be why I would lean towards the two. I would be okay with that, but I, you know, there's S R money that I don't understand when that's going to show up. Does it ever not show up? I mean, who knows, right? I mean, that's a decent chunk of money in my opinion, but, you know, you guys must know that that stuff arrives in some special box.
Well, the legislature has until May 21st, at the end of the session, to determine how that money is spent. And so right now, they've allocated that to us and kept the other remaining million dollars that was allocated to, to our school district, or supposed to be allocated, and is saying that we need to spend that on summer school. We won't know the answer to that until the end of the session unless they make a decision here soon as well. So a lot of those things are, you know, depending on the legislature. They have it. They have sent out emails to us saying, your allocation is $772,000. What we haven't received yet is when we get that money. But even if we got it in next year, that's when we would use it anyway, so that works.
Amy, thoughts?
Yeah, I, I'm on board. I mean, I think everybody's made really valid points today. And it's a tough discussion. I also want to keep in mind, we, we do, we won't know everything when we have to make our final decision, but we do have more time. And when we have these conversations and look at scenarios, which is what we're talking about today, it's healthy, it's good, and it, for, you know, we can't just say, okay, this is what we're going to do and, and stick to it and not consider other things. And that's what we're doing tonight, so I think we should.
Okay, I have the direction that we need. And we'll continue moving forward, and we will be back on March 22nd with those initial budget adjustment proposals for your review and then move toward that April 12th for approval.
For me, okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next up is the Ready to Learn Plan.
Excellent. Well, good evening again, board members. We were very happy to provide an update on the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools Ready to Learn Plan. Please know that this plan was presented last Thursday and is supported by both the Incident Command Team as well as our Regional Support Team, which again, those are members from the Minnesota Department of Education and Minnesota Department of Health. We were not required anymore to get approval or support from them. We have a very strong partnership with them and wanted to be sure that they had a chance to review our plan and give us any input or questions that they had. So through this presentation, we will take a look at some of our current data. We'll look at the timeline for transitioning. We'll spend some time talking about health and safety and then the secondary transition plan. And there are several teammates here this evening that are going to be coming in and out of this presentation. So we'll first talk about our current learning model. Right now, as you all know, like one more slide, one more slide, thanks. As you currently know, we have been in-person learning at the elementary level, January 19th, from, since January 19th for our kindergarten through 12th grade students and February 1st for our grades three through five. And then we've also been in hybrid learning since, since February 8th and then the 15th and 16th for some of our last older students. And we've maintained also that distance learning opportunity for both our elementary and our secondary students. We hadn't shown you this yet and wanted to take a look and make sure that you got a sense of the percent of students that we currently have at the elementary level, first of all, in our distance learning academy or in person, since we've made this last transition. So you can see at the K through 12 level, we've got about 86% of our students in person and 14 in hybrid, just slightly higher number of students, I'm sorry, in distance learning academy, not hybrid, just slightly higher percentage at third through fifth grade. And then the total at the elementary, 14% of our students currently are in the distance learning academy and 86% of our students are in-person learning. At the secondary level, so this is currently as we're in hybrid. So as we're in hybrid currently, our numbers at the middle school, almost 80% of our students are learning in a hybrid model, 21% in the, the distance learning. And at the high school, that's a little bit more students are in distance learning, 37% and 63% in hybrid learning. For a total of 70% of our secondary students are in the hybrid model and 30% are distance learning. When we first started planning for the change in the transition to secondary in-person, we wanted to get a sense from our families, what, knowing, you know, they didn't know a date at this point. They didn't know how fast or slow we've moved. But we wanted them, we asked them, knowing what you know right now, when we transition to secondary in-person learning, what will you decide to do? And we got responses from 1,600 families, so that accounted for about 2,300 students. And you can see the percentages based on what parents said just in this interest survey. About 11% said that they would remain in distance learning and 89% would move to in-person. So that's approximately half of the students who are currently, and again, it wasn't maybe just these families, but half of the students who are currently in distance learning, given these percentages, would return to in-person. So we just wanted to get, again, that wasn't a commitment by parents. That's now our next step when we communicate with families to get more of a commitment. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and share that timeline. So we have gotten a lot of stakeholder input as we look at disruption, as we looked at health and safety mitigation strategies, as we look at safe, safety and the changes that we'll have to make. And now the, the plan that we have at this point is that we would end our quarter as scheduled on Friday, April 2nd. Now, there was some talk earlier about ending the quarter early. We also took away two days of quarter three at the beginning of the quarter. And as we talked to more staff, especially those who had quarter classes or project-based classes, that was just going to be a little bit more of a burden for them if the quarter was, was cut short two days on this side as well. So then on Monday, April 12th, so that's the Monday that we come back from spring break, our, we went to have students that day, secondary students, they would have transition. Tuesday, April 13th is the scheduled ACT for our juniors. So our juniors would come to school, they take the ACT. Our sixth through 10th graders and our seniors would begin fourth quarter in distance learning. And that's the way we started third quarter as well when we were in hybrid. The teachers started through distance learning so that they were able to share everything with all kids at the same time. On Wednesday, the 14th is a scheduled K-12 grading day. So there was no school plan. So then we would start in-person. Um, so then we would start in-person learning for grade six through twelve on April fifteenth, and then obviously, distance learning would continue. And with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Joe, and I think Kate Kyle's coming up as well, our, uh, District, um, Health Services Coordinator, and they will share this portion. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Uh, Board Chair Ruel, Dr. Stallow, board members. Um, wanted to share a few different things with you tonight. So first of all, I'd like to talk about some of the mitigation strategies that we have continued to adjust and will be implementing as we bring back our sixth through twelve students in person. Um, as you remember, when our elementary students returned in January, one of the big conversations we had was about, um, layering mitigation strategies. And at that time, we had our staff wear a mask with a shield when they were working with or near students. Uh, we collected feedback from our staff as we went along, and some staff struggled with the, of wearing the mask and the shield. So we explored some different options, and so we have presented our staff with options that they've been using now for several weeks, and staff have been very appreciative of those changes. And so what those changes are, is we're still requiring our staff to use two layers of mitigation strategies that could still be the mask and the shield, if they would choose to do so. Um, other options include a mask with at least six feet of social distancing. We also have provided the plexiglass barriers to go along with the mask, or staff can choose to wear two masks. One of the things that, when we bring our students back in person at the secondary level, that we're gonna be looking at, is the social distancing component. We're asked to try to social distance by six feet whenever feasible. Looking at those numbers that Dr. Stallow shared, when we bring back ninety percent of our students at the high school and at the middle schools, it's not going to be feasible in almost every single situation for our students to be six feet apart. And so in those situations, what we need to do is we need to make sure that our students are maintaining three feet of physical distancing. And so we'll, we'll really be working with our staff now over the coming weeks to look at their classroom setups and see what types of options can they do to make sure that they can go ahead and arrange the students in a way to keep them not only three feet apart, but maybe create some cohorts. Because one of the things that we know is, the definition of a close contact is not changing. It's still maintaining this, within six feet for more than a cumulative fifteen minutes over a twenty-four-hour period. And with that said, when we're sitting three feet apart, we know there are going to be more close contacts at the secondary level, if there's a case. And so we want to make sure that we are setting up a system that allows us to not only identify those students, but then to be able to notify parents quickly. And so one of the things that Kate and I have been working on is looking at some different options of how we can notify families quickly when they are a close contact. One of the things that we've also had a lot of conversations about is, um, would be, back in December, the CDC released some new information where they had an option to go with a reduced quarantine. At that time, we as a district looked at that and made the decision that as we were returning with all elementary students, that was not the time to be making a change. And so we decided at that point to maintain the fourteen-day quarantine for all situations of a close contact. As we've continued to look at our district-specific data, I can tell you that over the entire year, we've only had three situations when we've put a individual into quarantine, and that person actually tested positive. And when they did test positive, in all three of those situations, it happened between day five and day seven. And so when we looked at that, we felt that now was the time to start to have the conversation about exploring a reduced quarantine option. And so what we're going to offer to our families would be, if the exposure is a community exposure, so that means it happened in the classroom, it maybe happened at an outside activity or sporting event, the family has an option to choose a ten-day quarantine, as opposed to the fourteen-day quarantine that we've been using before. Now, if it is a household con, um, exposure, where it's a sibling that is tested positive, the people in the house still must follow the full fourteen-day quarantine. We are not, as a district, exploring the seven-day quarantine with a negative test. There's a lot of very specific details that fit into that criteria, where there has to be a test on day five, and it has to be a very specific type of test. Not all COVID tests are accepted in that situation, so we're not going to go with that at this time. The other thing it will do is help to reduce some confusion, because there's always been a lot of confusion between the ten days and the fourteen days, whether you're the positive individual or the quarantine, and so this will help to make the number more consistent for people. Probably the most exciting piece that I've been involved with over the last month has been vaccines. Uh, I stood here before you and shared the very beginning stages, and I can tell you now that I'm standing before you at the very ending stages of the vaccine. Um, as of last Friday, every single staff member in our district has had the opportunity to be offered a vaccine. Now, that doesn't mean that everyone has been able to get the vaccine yet. We've had a few staff members that had to delay that vaccine due to personal situations, um, leaves, that type of thing. But I'm continuing to work with the county and continuing to work with those individuals to get those people in and vaccinated as soon as they are ready. Um, but I can tell you, in the conversations that I've had with staff members, they have said they didn't realize how much of a relief and a relaxing moment it was to get that first vaccine shot in their arm. And so the positive thing is, by having our staff at that point now, that means that our staff will be receiving their second dose right before spring break, which means they will all be fully vaccinated the fourteen days post, um, the second dose, as we return for quarter four, which aligns perfectly with what we're presenting today.
Uh, beginning January twenty-fifth, we started offering saliva testing to staff. The purpose of this testing is to target asymptomatic individuals who are carrying COVID-nineteen. To date, we've done over five-hundred of these tests. MDH launched a similar campaign on February twenty-fourth, targeting students and families who are asymptomatic, and encouraging and providing them the opportunity to be tested every week. Uh, we were able to provide those resources to families, so they have the opportunity to be tested as well.
What you see on the screen here is the weekly dashboard that we update on our website, and so we update this every Thursday. This is, these are the numbers that we updated last Thursday. As you can see, for the last seven days, as of last Thursday, there were zero staff cases. So that's definitely showing us, as we are starting to vaccinate our staff. We had fifteen student cases. Now, one of the things I want to point out is we continue to run, um, every single week, the equivalent of our student body per ten thousand, kind of relating to that county number that the state releases. And I do that for both the elementary and the secondary. And even with, uh, when you see that fifteen cases in a week, both the secondary and elementary numbers still fit in the twenty range for per ten thousand. Um, as you look at the number of staff that are quarantined with sixty-three, I can tell you that the majority of those are actually related to post-vaccine symptoms. Because we do have our staff that are working their way through receiving that vaccine. The thing is, we've been lucky enough that a lot of the vaccines were actually given on Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays. So hopefully, if a staff member was having some symptoms after their dose, they would have the weekend to work their way through that. Um, this is again, just another slide or a graph that we show on our website, which shows the per-week case and our county case rate. We're kind of flattening out right now at the county case rate. We're very much in that twenty-five to twenty-seven range with our county case rates.
Hi, uh, good evening, members of the board, Dr. Stallow, uh, Dr. Ruel. And, uh, I would like to share with you, uh, the, the beginning stages of our planning for bringing students back to school, uh, four days a week. So Dr. Bizik, Dr. Edwards, and myself were very, uh, alongside with, uh, members of the teaching and learning team and the cabinet members here in the district office, were diligently planning on what would that look like, what do we need to be aware of, trying to take one step at a time, be smart about this, no rush. We're in good shape right now, in a good place with students. And what's happening, it's not ideal, but we're good. We're doing, we're doing good. And, uh, uh, so what we, we know now that we will be bringing students to, uh, school Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. So it'll be four days a week instead of two days a week. And Wednesday will continue to be a flex day. Uh, what, what's happening on Wednesdays, um, is the teachers will continue to work with students who are struggling, who need additional support. Uh, in addition to that, we are required to provide an additional thirty-minute prep time, uh, for a day for teachers. So it's a cumulative, uh, that, um, is a two hours, two and a half hours, uh, because our teachers at the secondary level are teaching, uh, students who are distance learners and students who are in front of them in a, in synchronous way. Uh, and, um, uh, in addition to that, we have continued to bring students who are struggling on Wednesdays, uh, to help them with work that they're behind on. So students will come into us in small groups, in person. And, uh, at that time, teachers i- either remotely or in person coming over and helping students while they're in the building. It's about two, two and a half hours every Wednesday. So, uh, while, uh, our, uh, hybrid students will be coming four days a week.